We do have a need of an executive session today. So we're going to recess the public meeting at six oh one. And we're going to do a discussion on personnel. They have a motion, so thank you, Chris. And a second? Thank you, Brian. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We'll be back as quickly as we can. Thank you, everybody, for waiting. We are going to reconvene at six twenty eight P M. For spot-ins, there is none. Policies for first reading, there are none. Policies for second reading, there are none. That brings us to our first opportunity for comments from the public. There will be a second opportunity at the end. Ladies and gentlemen, we are about to move to the public comment period of our meeting. Although state law does not require us to hold public comment period, we have chosen to do so because we believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns and issues. Having said that, please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. This is because we take your concerns and questions seriously and want to have sufficient time to process and research issues if needed. We will, however, respond to your questions and concerns at a future meeting or have the proper staff member get back to you with appropriate time. Ms. Black will be keeping track of questions and make sure that they are passed to the appropriate person or persons. I also want to point out that under state and federal privacy laws, we are unable to entertain any comments or questions about school personnel. Please know, however, that we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to go through appropriate administrative channels. Finally, we recognize that right now our nation and our community are polarized on a number of issues. That said, we want our school board meetings to serve as an example for students that members of our school board and members of our community can deal with controversial issues in a civil manner and demonstrate mutual respect for one another. In that spirit, we will insist that all speakers and members of the audience maintain civility and respect for any divergent views that others possess. We ask that speakers, please, address their comments to the board directly rather than to the audience. And the unlikely event, the meeting becomes unruly, the board will recess the meeting and return once order has been restored. The board will now entertain public comments. Each individual speaker is allotted three minutes. The individual time limits will be enforced so that as many members of the public who wish to speak may be allowed to do so. Please state your name and residency before you begin. As I stated at the beginning of our statement, this is the first of two opportunities for comments from the public. That being said, is there anybody here this evening who would like to bring anything up?
Okay, commendations. Of the following, this long list of wonderful things, the following spring sports, all-stars, and exceptional seniors. Jane Austenfeld, New York State Academic All-American and Section Four Division Two Midfield First Team All-Star in lacrosse. Logan Ballard, All-Star Second Team for IAC Large School North in golf. Brenna Bow, Section Four Division Two Midfield First Team All-Star in lacrosse. Egan Johnson, Section Four Division Two Goalie Second Team All-Star in lacrosse. Lana Jordan, Section Four Division Two Defense First Team All-Star in lacrosse. Jasmine Lee, Section Four Division Two Attack Second Team All-Star in lacrosse. Emma Morgan, Section Four Division Two Defense First Team All-Star in lacrosse. Gavin Oliver, Exceptional Senior in lacrosse. Jeremy Simonson, Exceptional Senior in lacrosse. Bryson Smith, All-Star for IAC Large School North in baseball. Olivia Summers, All-Star for IAC North softball team. Casey St. John, All-Star IAC North softball team. And Bowen Tilson, Track and Field Second Team Class Championship All-Star. Fourth place and First Team IAC All-Star Second Place. Congratulations to them all. Pretty exceptional crew. Varsity Girls Lacrosse Coach Danielle Montesano, who was elected as Coach of the Year by Gannett Preston Sun-Bilton Plus Connects. Congratulations to that Danielle. High school seniors Jane Austenfeld and Brenna Bow for being selected by Gannett for their elite spring All-Star teams for the Binghamton and Almyra Corning regions. Mr. Aaron Kaminsky for raising a thousand dollars for Whitney Point Central School District through the Kaufman Gerhart Dollars for Scholars Dog Tournament. For the Whitney Point C E A student Marilyn Baxter, T R A student Leah Griffith, and high school student Gabriella Black for earning the Little Miss, Junior Miss, and Miss Broom County titles at the Broom County Fair pageants. The pageant awards are a great opportunity for the contestants to practice public speaking. All who were involved in the summer committees review and action planning meetings in response to the surveys that were received from parents, community members, students, faculty, and staff regarding transportation services, school culture, and athletic eligibility. And the Whitney Point Community Schools and Early Eagles Program for hosting Meetup Mondays this summer. That's an opportunity for children birth to age five to engage in theme, read alouds, and activity gatherings. The program offers community information and resources for families as well as free books for children. All of the Whitney Point administrators, faculty, and staff involved in making the summer enrichment program, summer enrichment camps, and summer zone camps successful this summer. Whitney Point T R A student Colleen Hildebrand, who represented Whitney Point Central School District at the Broom Tyoga Bosse Leadership Academy on July twenty seventh, twenty twenty-two, Colleen was chosen for the student panel discussion. And the Whitney Point Central School District Community Schools Program and the Binghamton University Physics Department for teaming up and holding a steam camp at Dorchester Park for our Raising Eagles program.
Lots of good things. Yep. We are going to go to the addenda because I did miss that there is a policy for first reading on there. It was all upon recommendation of the superintendent of the Board of Education for Whitney Point Central School District, approved policy number seven four two two, academic eligibility for first reading. They have a motion? Brian?
And Tom? So you, like you know, that we had three focus areas that we've been working on. One of them was the athletic eligibility policy. And this was stemmed from a concern that we had mid-year from a group of parents who were kind of upset at the way our eligibility policy was being enacted, particularly during this time when kids were already really trying to engage in every other way. They felt like, really, the way it was enacted was punitive and humiliating to students. And we had a meeting at that time, brought everybody together, sort of put a hold on that practice, at least, and policy, and just sort of focused on it for the rest of the year and trying to make sure that we're just supporting kids, getting them on track, and taking a positive approach, and knew that we needed to dig deeper to look at the policy and what the issues were. So we surveyed families, students, faculty, and staff in the districts regarding their feelings regarding these concerns. I also met with groups of all sorts of athletes in the high school to kind of get their perspective, all of which was very interesting. Interestingly, the most interesting thing was that almost without exception, all the students thought that we should definitely have an academic eligibility policy. They did, though, agree that some of the practices that were associated with it were, made them feel bad. They called it the walk of shame, coming to get your sheet. What would happen, I guess, what's happened over time is, in order to make sure that things got taken care of and just trying to be efficient, that kids were called down to get their sheet, and the idea of it was to make sure that they got their sheet, got their stuffs, and continue to play. Because our policy is pretty forgiving. Like, as long as you're doing, you know, doing your best, you're trying, you're working with your teachers, you're trying to improve, you get to still participate, and that was the goal, to use the power of students wanting to play sports as leverage to kind of keep their grades up. And again, students said they think that's a really, that's an important thing to continue to do. But they do not like that because they felt like everybody knew why you're getting called down. They don't, they didn't like the fact that they had that sheet of paper, they had to walk around, so then everybody knows what you got to walk around and get that sheet signed for, and that you had to get it signed by every single teacher, even when you weren't necessarily failing that class. So therefore, the relationship that you would have with that teacher where you were maybe a ninety student, suddenly they look at you differently. They also felt like they, there really wasn't time to do that, teachers were in a rush, you know. I mean, there was lots of feedback we got from all groups, but it was really mostly about the way that it was being carried out. So we, in our meetings, the first meeting, we, you know, took all that information that we got as feedback and then sort of looked at our policy to see how maybe we could tweak it, to stick with the spirit of it and the intent of it, but maybe to address those areas. One of the other things that's happened also is that because we've gone to the split schedule and sports start right after school, there's no time, like, so kids couldn't even get help. They couldn't stay, like, our policy said you could stay for extra help. Well, we had not, not even allowed that. So one of the things that we're changing is that we are creating a time now, we're pushing practices back just a little while. So even though our day, our high school day starts earlier, it's going to mimic the way it was before, so there's that time that you can stay with teachers. We're going to set up supported environments too, that were even at the high school level, because we've always had that at T R A, where you can come if you need extra help, and you get extra help, and that you're going to be expected to come there for that. And then we are tweaking some things to make it, and again, this is for your review, to be justice, you would have to go get a good report from the subjects that were you were down, not to every single other teacher. The intent of doing it with every other teacher was good, because what tends to happen with kids, you know, you push in one area and then you fall off in another area, and the intent was to not let that happen. But again, in getting the perspective of from those parents and those students, that that's really changes things in your relationship with teachers, and it's, you know, it's an embarrassing thing, and it's a, so, you know, we're going, we're feeling like we can honor that, and, you know, we're going to keep an eye on them regardless. We also changed it so that all students, depending on what's time the sports season starts during the course of the year, there's something else that sort of popped up. Some kids never even got a chance to start because they were just coming right off of a report card time, but yet all sports always were pretty much in good shape. So we're giving kids a chance to always start the season. And then if we know that maybe they're, they're, you know, needing some extra help, right away, trying to get them to stay in the, in the study hall after school and work with them, trying to get them in again, using that leverage of the sport and being part of a team in a more positive way. So this is for your review, just to look at, to see whether, you know, you could, you're okay with these changes. We're going to try, and we do think it's important for kids to be involved themselves in getting something to show to the, to the coach or the athletic director. But we're going to try and do electronically, again, so you're not getting called down and not walking around with these papers that everybody knows, you know, that, you know. So that's, those are the changes we're looking to make.
So if I'm reading this correctly, if they're failing two or more, they can, as long as they're getting the approval from the teachers where they're failing, they can, I know, they can continue to practice with the team, do they, are they still able to compete?
If they are, no, if they, if they are continuing, if they're not doing what they need to do.
But I mean, if they are, because I know at one point that the policy used to say that if, if you're not.
Yeah, if the evaluation form is unsatisfactory, then the athlete may practice but not participate, which is not a change. That's the way it was. I mean, our, our, our policy and the intent was pretty forgiving, you know.
But if it is, it is satisfactory that the teachers are saying that they're making an effort, they're trying, okay, so their, their grade isn't passing yet, but they're at least showing an effort, then they can still practice and compete.
When I went to the first meeting, I wasn't able to go to the second meeting because I was at the conference, but, I mean, everything Joanna has mentioned was, we walked them up, which is really interesting. And one of the things that was noted is that, with the two or more subjects, Stephanie, is that sometimes the student might be failing, and it wasn't on the effort of the student to get the grade ahead of the mark. It could be that the teacher didn't have time to let them retake the quiz that could raise their grade.
Yeah.
Or something like that. So that's why they wanted to make sure they weren't punishing the student when the teacher actually is saying. Yeah, and the teacher's saying, yes, the student has contacted me, they're trying to retake the quiz. I haven't had the time to make sure this happens yet, and it might be that one grade that's just killing your GPA right then. So that's why I think they will be looking at making that a little bit more flexible, letting the teacher be the formative input on that piece of information.
And I like them that it's not based solely on a number grade, because sometimes it takes a little bit to get your grade back up. And as long as they're continuing moving forward and working on that, I don't think they should be penalized in full sports, because we've all shown that them being able to participate in activities, whether it's sports, or music, or arts, or a club, that it goes hand in hand with their academics.
I know that there was conversation about how this could be played into, like, club things and stuff like that, but there's a lot of other rules and regulations that filter that, so that's why this right now has.
No, no, I know, but I'm saying.
It was an interesting conversation.
In general, participation in those things goes hand in hand with academics. I wasn't meaning to say that, you know, these, this policy should affect those, but.
We know collaboration, learning is skill.
I just want to say that I know I was involved the first time through, and I was very impressed, and Mr. Peitler tried very hard to be strict but fair to make the students do what they're made in tennis through school, they have to learn, and, and I was very impressed with how it came out, and I see that it's basically the same. So I'm glad, I really appreciate the information about what wasn't working with it, and it makes me feel great that the students were on board, and they also feel, I mean, I, that's.
Right, it really wasn't the policy, it was the practice.
It's implementation of how it was done. And I have to say that growing up, and I got free lunch, and what they used to do every morning is they'd call out your name, and you would rock up in front of the class, and you would have a token handed to you for your milk, and then you'd go up and do it for your lunch, and at lunchtime, you'd put it in. And everybody knows anyway, but it's just they have one more level, so I really, I like that change, and I can see where I'll deal with it, it's my problem, everybody doesn't have to know, and I'm sure that the teachers then know somebody that might need help, and even the other ones that aren't signing it, but you don't have to air that. And so I really appreciate that very, very much, so who goes to the group? And like I said, thank you for the information. Like you said, I'm reading through, I'm like, so what changed?
Yeah, it's really, you know.
It's almost the same. So that, I appreciate that, because I know what it was, and I liked what it was, which was good to see, but it's just the implementation.
Yeah, that we haven't changed the the direction that it goes in, what it's trying to accomplish, but how they do it. And I like the fact, like you said, that they don't have to go to every single teacher, and that it's going to be done electronically so that.
And I don't know if Stacy could share the one document that Burkey shared with us. That was pretty extensive. Of course, Gabrielle does everything top-notch, but to look at other schools' policies, and I know that we had parents upset a little bit with the policy, but to look at the other schools' policies, holy moly, you know, and of course, I had a daughter in athletics, and we had people in athletics, and I'm like, well, half of these students wouldn't be playing anyhow, so I think that we are proactively trying to support our students in a positive way. And I think this really does help make some changes, and it might have to be tweaked again another couple of years, at least we're making some positive impact. And we got the approval from students.
And I have to echo that, that I've been involved in sports my whole life, and a lot of times it's, I like rules and I like laws, and I really was very impressed, because I know Mr. Peitler was the main person that worked so hard to make it tough but fair, and I know a lot of schools, we don't care, you're not doing it.
You're done, you're out.
And, and I mean, I think that he came up with a very good thing, so I echo that on all levels, that there's a lot of places that you're done. So this, I think we have a very nice.
Also, with it, I think the, you know, I guess what was not intentional, I think some of the, something believable was the reason, it's kind of on the negative side, and, you know, it singles out the negative instead of the positive, but I think they're going to actually be trying to do, it's seeing that's positive, so by taking the words out, it makes a big difference to the policy.
It's not only the intent, but it's how it's presented.
I would just, rather than echoing everything I said, I would just like to applaud you for actually doing the survey and getting feedback from all avenues and taking the time and putting a committee together, because I think this looks great. And I know a lot of parents complaining about this and reading it, I think it's fair, but it also gives good guidance as well, so good job, I think it looks great.
Thank you to everybody. Yes, thank you, and thank you for everybody who took the time to be part of, like, all phases of it, you know, and sometimes it's, you know, hard looking at all that survey data and trying to, you know, get your head around it in your busy life, but lots of people took time to do, to be part of it.
The one that kept putting the charts together for us all.
Amanda Burns.
Yeah, she did, you know, she really worked hard to make it visually appropriate for us to really see things, it was very nice. And to see Bill in the meeting, it really expresses a kind of.
Do we have any other questions or thoughts about the policy? So all those who approve the policy for first reading?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Thank you. Okay, back to our agenda. All business, there is none. That brings us to the approval of the consent agenda. They have a motion? Thank you, Brian.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? To your recommendation, on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, that Christian Williams, he is hereby granted tenure in the area of elementary teacher effective September first, twenty twenty-two. May I have a motion? Thank you, Tiana. And a second? Thank you, Tom. Any questions or comments? Mr. Williams here.
Congratulations. I mentioned to the board that you had the most popular, I think, summer program. You kept getting raves about.
Kids love it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know I read what you did, but can you remind me what your program was? Yeah, that's excellent.
Yeah, but I'm sure they love that.
Something more than making easy Mac. Although knowing how to make easy Mac without blowing anything up is a good skill to have too. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
I'll abstain.
Congratulations. We're going to move to the agenda again for resignation. Approve the resignation of Kevin Gudorah, Special Education Teacher, effective August eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Do you have a motion? Approve, thank you, Chris. And a second? Thank you, Brian. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, appointments. Approve the four-year probationary appointment of Mary Ellen Benimore, School Counselor and the School Counselor tenure area, effective September first, twenty twenty-two. May I have a motion? And a second? Thank you, Chris. Any questions or comments?
This is for Amanda Doolittle's position at the T R A. Do you mean, how do we snag Mary?
No, we have a music teacher.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Back to the agenda. It was all upon recommendation of the superintendent of the Board of Education for Whitney Point Central School District, approved the four-year probationary appointment of Demeen Federovich, music teacher in the music teacher tenure area effective September first, twenty twenty-two. The probationary period of September first, twenty twenty-two through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-six is tentative and conditional only, except to the extent required by the applicable provisions of Section three zero one two of the education law. In order to be granted tenure, the teacher must receive composite or overall annual performance review ratings pursuant to Education Law Section three zero one two dash B of either effective or highly effective for the required number of years. And if the teacher receives an ineffective composite or overall rating in the final year of the probationary period, the teacher shall not be eligible for tenure at that time. May I have a motion? Thank you, Tom. And a second? I heard Chris. Any questions or comments?
I don't, if you were going to comment, I just.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm losing track of who's the rare. I need a roadmap for a lot of these departments now, but I was trying to figure out who is still here and where, so I don't know if that could just be just mentioned real quick, and I, I know all the departments telling me that, but this is probably one of the quicker.
This is the mass migration of educators around the region, everybody's moving, and we lost a lot of music teachers. So Jennifer Haynes resigned, and so she's in the C E A, and that's what she means for the team.
I'm sorry, I know we had and I'm lost in game, but it hasn't been a one-to-one the whole time.
Right.
There's, so it.
This is one I meant, a Latin snagger. Although counselors are not easy to come by either, we're struggling at the college.
That and special education, oh, yeah. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the appointment of Jamie Glodowski, Term Substitute Elementary Education Teacher for the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three school year, effective September first, twenty twenty-two. May I have a motion? Approve. And a second?
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Brian. This is Burke Valley Blocker's year-long leave. Any questions from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the appointment of Lynette Bear, Bus Monitor, effective August fourth, twenty twenty-two. May I have a motion? Thank you, Chris. And a second? Thank you, Brian. Questions or comments?
This is for Bethany Frank's position.
Any questions from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Back to the agenda, resolution to dissolve a position. It resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, for reasons of economy and efficiency in the operation of the district and the district schools, the Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central School District hereby dissolve one full-time tenure track instructional support teacher position effective August seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, as follows, in the social studies tenure area, one position. May I have a motion? Thank you, Brian. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Tiana.
So you may, this is one of these bizarre situations, so we created this position last year with somebody who was one of our, the apprentices, it was like a student-teacher placement, and then that person stayed for the rest of the year to work with, with students, and really the only way to hire her was to create this instructional support position, and we had hoped she was going to stay for this coming year before she moved on, again, looking at these pandemic funds that are temporary to try and be creative, but she got pulled somewhere else.
So, so do we still have money for the?
We do, but we have to be like, so she happened to be a social studies teacher, that's when she was certified, so it had to be, so potentially, if we can find another. Yeah, and we are, just as, like, another thing, like, some of the other things that we're doing, some of our retired teachers are going to come back, and they only want to work so much, but we'll take them, you know, because that. But we'll take them, you know, because that we can, they'll work and do a greeting and mentioning the students too, so we're looking to hire them on a.
And how does that work for, I know how it works for me, but for civil service and reflation and pension.
Yeah, there's a cat. And actually, you know, I don't wanna speak about people's, but there's another person we just approved as a retired person, thankfully, and because they lifted that cap. Through this next year, it's much more appealing to people. So.
I just know that it was intent was good to start out with, but then it was abused by double dipping by a lot of people making lots of money. That were making two or three jobs worth of money before they really retired, so.
But, yeah, but for right now, when we have this desperate need for.
Oh, I get it. I'm glad. I'm just saying that I just know that I was wondering how that worked, because I know how it works with other employees and.
Yeah.
State and federal retirement world. It's not, it's not pleasant. I'll say that personally.
What, what they did, they allowed teachers to go back into teaching service and not have any penalties against their. Cat of minimum higher of payment. So they can get like a regular salary. That doesn't mean they need to get an exorbitant salary, but they could get a justifiable salary for what they're doing. So that has worked very, very well. I mean, I applaud New York for doing that because right now. The Santas in Florida said schools of education are not doing their jobs, so we are going to let emergency. Firemen be our teachers in our classroom and our veterans who have core knowledge and they'll have students do things well. So I'm really glad that.
Houses of military and different.
And that in New York City is looking at it a little differently.
No, I can appreciate it. Just know that usually you end up fortunate in your pension.
So June twenty twenty-three, but I have a feeling you're gonna extend it, Tom.
No, that's good to have people that know if they could come back, so I just wanted to know how it is.
We doubled your salary. Any other questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the following students of a staff member to attend the Whitney Point School District for the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three school year and that tuition be waived. Catherine Bovier, grade eleven, and Sophia Bovier, grade eight. May I have a motion? Chris? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? The result upon recommendation of the superintendent of the Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central School District. Approve the employment agreement between the chief executive officer and the Whitney Point Clerical Association effective July first, twenty twenty-two. Through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. May I have a motion? Thank you, Tiana. A second? Questions or comments? Thank you guys for.
Zach, good job. Working those numbers.
I'm sure they're gonna appreciate it too.
Yeah, Zach applies to the pay no attention to that man.
I know you don't. Especially now doing this, like trying to create, you know, work the numbers to get the right, you know, so people who've been here longer. Honor appropriately.
And I just hope that our community appreciates it as much as the employees and the board do, because I think it's not known that. I appreciate the ethics that go into it and the fairness it's done to try to make everybody feel. That they're being looked at and considered and I appreciate that very much, especially for our members that work. Especially the ones that within our community that are here to help out like doing what you do. Thank you.
And it's been really difficult with the minimum wage increase. And all of a sudden you find, yes, we got a raise because you had to be bumped up to minimum wage, but now you've been here for ten years and somebody who's just starting is making the same thing. You are, and it's not equitable and we need to. Show our, you know, long-term employees that we appreciate their work and, you know. So you guys make a very big effort to do all this. Any other questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? One more time to the agenda. Last thing. It is all upon recommendation of the superintendent with the Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central School District. Approve the memorandum of agreement between the chief executive officer and the Whitney Point Administrators Association. Thank you, Tiana. Second? Thank you, Tom. Questions or comments? Those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve Seraphini Transportation Corporation as low bidder for the transportation. Of a student between Whitney Point Central School District and Bosworth Learning Center for the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three school year. May I have a motion? Thank you, Chris. A second? Any questions or comments?
We haven't had one of these in a while. Mainly, we haven't been able to get these companies to even bid and come out to pick up our runs. So the fact we had two competitive bids was interesting. But again, this was based off a recommendation from the Special Ed Department and transportation, that this was definitely the best interest of the district and that's why. It's presented tonight.
This lower than what we were doing in our time?
Absolutely not. It's way more, but again, there's a lot of issues behind it of why it's recommended this way, Brian. But what it does do, we would have had to designate one driver and one monitor strictly to this one individual. So now that frees that, again, really a whole route up where we can transport way more students than the one.
We're desperate for our drivers to be driving.
And the student is getting where they need to be.
Absolutely.
So, even with the bid. So it was still more expensive if we were paid for the driver and the car and the monitor?
Oh, yeah. Yep. It's again, these companies do it and they profit off it.
Yeah, I looked at it. It was like.
Yep, and it is based off of, you know, the days that they are transported, so there's no guarantee that that student will transport and ride every single day. But that is the base rate and, you know, again, to multiply that by roughly a hundred and eighty school days, which would be perfect attendance, which we don't see often, but. Potentially that could be the maximum.
So I did read correctly that even if the student doesn't serve services, we still pay.
Nope, not, no, there, we'd have to do it more than a two-hour cancelation and we would not be charged.
Okay, two hours. Not notice is a hundred dollars.
Got it. So basically, show up and the kid just doesn't.
Yeah, we have to balance the cost of having the outside company do it to tying up. A vehicle, a driver and thermometer, since we don't have enough of those on a daily basis. Um, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? We have resolved the con recommendation of the superintendent with the Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central School District. Having conducted a public hearing on July fifth, twenty twenty-two and having the safety plan available for public comment accepts as a whole. For the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three school year, the district-wide emergency response plan with the following non-substantive changes. Do I need to do the changes?
No.
Yeah, and there were none from the initial hearing that we didn't.
I knew that you would have highlighted those if they were. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? I didn't ask for a motion. Get ahead of myself. Thank you, Chris. All those in favor? Sorry about that.
Hey, so I mentioned that we had our three committees do their work. We talked about the athletic eligibility work, but we had two other groups. One was on transportation, we were talking about transportation, and the other was very broad and that was, we called it culture. Because there were lots of things under that umbrella. So transportation, I'll start there, just to give you an update, the outcomes of those meetings is that we, in lots of ways, we're just sort of. Do a campaign, even though we have a sign out there that says, you know, we always have it posted that there may. Maybe ways that we can make it more appealing, like, for example, some of the changes that we made in the contract, we first made it with MOA and the contract that. Get right away insurance, so people may think, well, I'm, you know, I work a couple of hours or it's not worth my time, but if I think, well, I get healthcare policy. You know, and retirement and all of those things, that may change things a little bit. We also, we're gonna try and, we're gonna, you know, push that information out there, because I don't really see that on some of the other signs other districts have. And then the other, and obviously to be more clear about the fact that we train will take you, you know, as long as your license is clean. And you can background check the physical, that, that's it, we'll take care of the training from there. Also looking to start to appeal to some of our graduating seniors, maybe you don't know, and maybe they can't be drivers until they're twenty-one. But they could potentially be monitors and start out like, you know, maybe working in transportation to get them interested in the fact that that's a really important job, you know? You're working with kids, you're keeping them safe, it's really, it's really like the most important job. And try and, you know, talk about the fact that the wage has gotten better and, you know, again. You get a retirement and an insurance plan, so we're gonna work on that. We also are, is related to the other committee to make sure that we're really, when we're talking with students. At the start of the year, we're going to really focus on bus, like your day, school day starts with the bus, you know, and this is how we behave on the bus. And these are the expectations on the bus and this is how we treat each other on the bus. And then sharing information, because we've had lots of concerns in the community about things that they are seeing. Sometimes there are misunderstandings about what they're seeing, because every concern or, you know, issue that gets, we look at the videotape, we look at everything that happens. So trying to raise some awareness, like one of the things that I keep referring to is people often say that they rammed right through the railroad tracks. Well, the bus can stop well before the railroad tracks and they have a whole procedure. Every bus does it, they, you know, stop, everybody has to be quiet. But it can be quite a way, so if you're on the other side of the intersection and they look, by the time you get there, you think they never stopped. But they had stopped, and so we're putting together some infographs about things like that and also what to do if a bus is parked on the side of the road. Or, you know, what does that mean if they're yet, if their lights are on, but their stop sign isn't out and things like that. Trying to, you know, just share some information about all that the drivers do every day and the fact that often like people will say that the bus is coming at a different time every day. Well, our routes are long and if one person's a little behind schedule, that puts the whole route behind schedule. So we also were looking at technology to see, some places have apps that will let you know and let you know when the bus is coming. So that you're not out in the freezing cold waiting for the bus and getting aggravated, that you know where.
That would be.
Yeah.
Incredible. If you look at it in the one meeting, you look at the app, the thing that we would be a little concerned about is there are. Places where the app won't work because we have lots of, you know, cell towers and things like that. But we did look into it and it was sort of free but not free, right?
Right, well, the one coming, we're looking at free but not free, but what we did find out, Bob Wolf let us know that the company, he's. The platform he uses to schedule everything, they also have this system within their product, so he saw a demo. We're gonna meet with him, see what he thinks and see how we can move forward.
I just, it's coming from somebody who has a driveway that's two-thirds of a mile long and you can't see the road from. I don't know how many times I was standing out there in the middle of the winter waiting because there wasn't an option of the bus stopping and beeping and having us come out. It was either we were there or they didn't, they didn't stop. So having an idea, so we got to the point where they had friends who were before them on the roof who would text them. And let them know when they were picked up and that was helpful, but so being able to know that, okay, the bus is so far away from me. And it's time to go out, I think that that's. That would be incredible.
And the expensive colleges don't have free laundry either.
And then so culture is the other, the committee, and so things will be coming to you. Based on conversations in, in having to do with the code of conduct, what our expectations are for students. We really try to focus on not setting ourselves into situations where we're doing battle over things that don't really matter. There was, there's a lot of language in our code of conduct and in even the, the dress code part that is really, really outdated. And so, and there's also very clear new guidelines through Title Nine. That you have to be very careful about not having rules that seem like they're aimed at one gender and not another. So we're putting together some simplified language about that, you know, not calling out this or that. We already were not really following what is in there right now. We had relaxed a lot of the requirements. For example, kids were allowed to wear hats and hoods and that was part of just trying to get them back to school and being engaged and not making a big deal out of everything. We are not gonna allow hoods though, because that is a safety concern. You can't, you can't tell who who and you can't tell, you know, they got earbuds in or not and. But pretty much everything else, you know, unless it's, you know, somehow discriminatory or offensive or, you know, and. Promote something dangerous or, you know, illegal activities of some sort and you're reasonably covered. You know, we're not gonna get into measuring how long and how, you know, I mean, that's, and, because that really infuriates people. They, you know, just, you know, focusing on coming to school to learn, that's what it's about, like this, we're coming to learn. And that being the messaging about everything, and this is how we behave when we come to school, this is how we dress when we come to school.
I think as long as those expectations are clearly stated, and here's part of it too. We have to make sure that across the board, all of those expectations are. Expected. Because I know that there's, there's a lot of like, you know, all of this teacher will let you do this and this teacher will let you do, you know, so.
Well, in some, and in some of the cases. You know, people were enforcing rules because it's a rule, because it says that, and when you ask them, does it really matter?
No, not really.
Doesn't, it's not really interfering with the educational process, it just is the rule, so we're trying to get away from that too, because that, because then the other teacher feels like, oh, that's dumb rule. I don't wanna enforce that rule, and then that sets up situations where people feel like it's unfair, which is what, you know, kids have a really strong sense of justice, they should. But they, when they, when they see things are not, you know, handled.
They also can work loopholes like, you know, what is business, so, and that, that sets up for situations as well.
At, at the meeting, I think that was, was basically one of the number one, it was like, yeah, we need to make changes. You know, the technology policy shouldn't say, you know, MP three fires and thing like that.
So that's the other one.
Yeah, and so all of those details were new, obvious, but I think the biggest part that the people, that was one of the larger meetings. I didn't get to the second one, but again, the first one was one of the larger meetings attended. And one of the things that I, I heard very loudly was, when we make these changes, let's make sure the community. Is consistent, that it's not one teacher over the other or this, but we're all on the same page. Doing the same process, so there's not that, what you're talking about, Stephanie, that bashing.
That, that dichotomy of, like, I can go to here, here, here's an example, like. I know that in the past, in the CEA and in the TRA, flip flops were not allowed, but in the high school, maybe they weren't allowed, but they were tolerated. And so it's like, you can't just, and there are reasons for them not to be wearing them at the CEA and, and, and other places. So it's like, if you're going to have something like that, it has to be across the district, not.
Well, there are some things that are developmental.
No, I know, and I know that there are some things that are developmental, but like something like flip flops, it's like, if you think that they're dangerous.
Well, and really, like, the focus will be on, yeah, if they're, so you can't go to the gym fast with flip flops or, you know, or slides. Because they all wanna wear slides or even Birkenstocks, that's, I mean, everybody wears them and that's really against the rule, because they're supposed to have a back on them. So, I mean. So, I mean, you know, what's the issue, really? Well, they shouldn't go to recess, they shouldn't go out, you know, they need to have safe footwear for recess, for, for playing sports, for being in phys ed.
So that makes, that makes much more sense.
Right, instead of just seeming like we're being mean for no reason. And then the other, obviously, big, big one is cellphone use.
And with technology altogether, cell phones, iPhones, phone watches, earbuds, everything that could keep us sane.
Real quick, Joanne, on the cellphone, that was one of the things I wanted to bring up. Is the cellphone actually included in the code of conduct?
So it's a separate, it's a separate, well, it is mentioned, but it's a whole separate policy.
Yeah, the policy's separate, and that's one thing I wanted to bring up. That's one of the things that I think is, is definitely needs revision, and I'd like to be part of that committee, because I hear a lot of teachers complain about that, and students, and we need to be consistent across the board.
So, so right now, we haven't been following the policy, and we, so we are changing our practice, because as you know, it's been a huge problem. It's, and we have, I mean, we understand cell phones are everywhere, they're a part of life. All those kinds of electronics are part of kids' lives, parents, there was a lot of conversation about the fact that parents now expect to be able to communicate with their child, you know, at whatever point in the day. So, but we know that it's very disruptive to education, and, you know, it's constantly distracting kids. They, it's hard for them to focus, I mean, it's not, nobody would argue with that. So it's gonna look a little bit different in different places, but, yeah, that, no, no phones, nothing during instructional time.
Right.
And so we are gonna have places for, a lot of schools are doing this, like, a place when you come in, you put your phone up there, you can see it, it's up there, it's out of the way, putting it away, learning time.
Unless the teacher wants to use it for their instructional.
Yeah, and that is, would be just only specifically, they say, like, for example, was if they, there's like, an app that is used. I mean, that would be only then, and so the language that they're putting in the handbooks are gonna have to do with that, like, you know, specific times, but the rest of the day, they're not. Although they are gonna allow kids, because again, this is the reality of the world now. Like in the TRA, for example, you can, you can check, we're not on phones, you're not gonna spend the entire first, you know, part of the day in the hallway with, with your phone, which is mesmerized by it, but you can check your phone. You know, we know that your mom may be telling you, so we're gonna pick you up after, or Uncle Joe's gonna pick you up after sports practice, and so you can check it, there'll be a time in the beginning of the day, the middle of the day, and the end of the day, when you can check your phone, but the rest of the day.
Kind of like the tech stops on the highway.
There we go, we made highway stops. So, one of the things.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah.
Okay, so that is part of the culture committee, has been solidified.
Yeah, so we're, so they're working on the handbooks right now.
Can we look at it before it's actually approved?
So the, so there's two different things, what's, what our practice was, which, like I said, we haven't, our practice already was away from the policy. So the policy, we need to change.
Okay.
So we're gonna do that, yes, and make sure, because both of them are very outdated.
I've looked at seven other school policies on Bones, and I love them all. And so I just wanna make sure that what I'm reading is consistent, because it seems to work for them, and I'm just very.
I would also bet, though, that those, a lot of those schools have not been following the policy, again, for the same reasons why we have not been. But, it's like, yeah, ours definitely, it needs to be updated, I'm not saying, but I'm just saying that all of the schools have been in the same position where.
And, and pretty much everybody's on the same page this year, like, all right, well, this is, we've experienced that, that's, yeah.
Like, new school year, new ideas, exciting stuff for the teachers, for the students, like, keep it off with all these exciting new things are going on. So one final comment, with these three changes, once they are solidified, signed off, how do you roll that out to staff? Is that done prior to the beginning of the school year, I'm assuming?
Prior to the beginning of the school year, to families, to, to families, students, and to staff, and then at the beginning of the, of the school year, we have those two days we talked about, with faculty and staff, everybody together, the message will be clear to all of them. And then in the faculty meetings, because it does look a little bit different at the different build, I mean, the CEA doesn't have the same.
Sure, right.
And I like that, I like that the committee looked at, each building is gonna have a different flavor. Don't make it one cap for everyone, because we all have different sizes, and teachers have different needs, and I thought that was very important in the committee that they were looking at.
So they'll, at the, the building level faculty meetings, that they'll go over, that this is what it's gonna look like in the high schools, but, and, but everybody, again, you pit teacher against teacher, and that turns into a mess. And then it seems like this teacher's unfair, and that, you know, it is disruptive.
They get out of their hands and say, this is the rules and guidelines that everyone has to follow.
Yeah, we're here to learn.
Love it.
Here's, here's an odd question, I watched, brought this up in the past. All these different ethics and committees and stuff, do they also, have they been changed in our, they also enforced for staff?
Well, that's part of what we talked about.
Well, I, I've been bringing it up for a long time, and there's a lot of unions and a lot of other reasons why certain things can't. And I know that makes students very angry that, I can't wear this, but so-and-so's wearing that, and they're a teacher, or they're on their phone all day long, and to me, that's, you, you model what your behavior is supposed to be, but I know it's been hard, sometimes because of unions and how things have to be rolled out, and what's allowed and not, but I just think that, but I know that I've brought up many, many, many times code of ethics, dress code, everything, and it's just, and I, I know, and I'm not trying to turn on you, but I think a lot of times, it's like, we, we're not dealing with that, you're not dealing with that. So I just, I just like to bring that up, because you model what you expect, and, and again, students notice everything.
At least the teachers that were in the meeting were positive about making that change and making it happen with teachers. So that's all I can respond on, so, and I know that Illinois N and M did say, let's, let's make this a collective agreement, so.
Oh, no, and I, I'm glad that it's at least there, but I mean, in practice, and.
The only way to make changes and force it, right, it's not really up for discussion or optional.
I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, I mean, I'll tell you what.
Right, I mean, that's how it should be, that's how corporate America is, it's not up for discussion. The rules apply to everybody regardless of your title or position, so, to me, it's just.
It is a little different than corporate.
Yeah, and really, this, this is a totally different academia, it's, it is.
No, but I'm talking about the policy, and the guidelines is like corporate America. I'm not saying the school is like corporate America, but when you have a guideline, and it's put into a policy, from my training and board member, policy is law, so law is to be followed by everyone. Am I not accurate in that statement?
No, you are, but I'm just saying that most of the policies, because I've been on the policy committee, and it's always bothering me, almost the power, all the policies mentioned, student.
Okay.
In many, many places, and it doesn't say staff a lot of places, and when it was brought up, it was intentional. And so, I'm, I'm not trying to argue or say, I'm just saying that. And so it should be, but in it, and the policy covers what's in the policy, what's not in the policy is not covered, which turns into me, the Wild, Wild West.
I, I agree with you, I, I'm actually.
I'm frustrated, I'm very frustrated.
I'm frustrated too, because I, again, I think that going into the beginning of the school year, consistency is absolutely necessary, I think Chris said it earlier. So we need to be consistent across the board, and I'm gonna end with that comment, because that is what I'm trying to get to, is consistency, and I think you guys are shaking your head in agreeing, so that, that's good. And I, I applaud you for, for taking these three things, because I think they're the most important right now, that I've heard the biggest complaint about, and I'm, I'm glad that you guys actually took the time to get the surveys, form the committees, and have a good outcome from that.
I, I do have a question, and it's based on my own personal experience in that I wear a continuous glucose monitor, and it is connected to my phone. So you guys will notice that my phone is on the table. The only other time I touch my phone is if I need to put something in my calendar, or if my glucometer starts going off. So what will happen, well, I mean, like, okay, so technically, a student or a staff member who's wearing a continuous glucose monitor, even if it's up front, the, the range is still gonna go off. But, you know, what are accommodations going to be made for something like that? Like, it has to be in your pocket.
Yeah, I talked about that.
Yeah, you're right, yes, and so, I mean, there are things now, too, that, you know, people, you have like a health plan, or you might have a five or four plan that allows you to, you know, have those accommodations, certainly, yeah.
Because then I've had some patients, like, saying, oh, you're allowed to use your phone at work, and it's like, well, sometimes the patients want me to text them messages instead of calling them, but also I have it out, because, like I said, like, glucose monitor is connected to it, I need to know if I'm going high or low. So it's out, I'm generally not on it when somebody's in there, and I just wanna make sure that.
Well, I also think here at our campus, and I think this is true at a lot of campuses, the cellphone is the emergency action system. And so when there's an emergency, like, they may have it, that might go across the speakers and the monitors, but I know for me, for example, I was in Marathon, and they had an active shooter right in downtown Marathon, and they did not set off the alarms on purpose, because they didn't want the children to be frightened, but every teacher's phone heard them going off, and they, teachers knew exactly what was happening, and that was part of their emergency action plan, and not everyone knows that, and not everybody needs to know that, but that is important, that our teachers know that they can keep them with them, but they don't need to be Facebooking and social media, but parents will send a teacher messages, if you're like, you know, is Suzie okay today, she left home crying, you know? And I think it's great that our teachers can do that and do it reasonably and smartly, so. I do think that teachers' policy needs to be a little different than a student's policy because of their position and their skills to be wise in what they do. Now, if they're not being wise, that's Joanne's problem, not mine.
Right, I mean, you know, I mean, honestly, it's, it's as much of a allure for adults, I mean, it's hard, people are very, you know, used to having their phones all the time.
It depends on how you were brought up, and I, and I've been around long enough, I'm sure you have, that what is considered normal and acceptable, and you try to say you can't really be doing that, and you get looked at, like, are you insane? You know, it actually comes out, it's not. It can come out.
But one of the teachers made a really, really good point, and is that, that now that we now have gone to, pretty much every student has a device, that those devices are still being used in schools too. And so students still have access, so understanding how to use that properly, and knowing how to use it properly too, is going to be part of that policy. So I think they really did look at it very broadly, and they did look at some other schools, like, teacher con, parent contracts, and how a cellphone's gonna be used. So parents were aware, and that communication was out, so I thought the committee really looked at it really well, at least in the first moment we were at, and they really did a really good job.
Yes, and again, thank you, everybody, for all their contributions to all of it.
Okay, that brings us to our second opportunity for comments from the public. The statement read that the first opportunities remains the same for the second, but I'm not going to make you all listen to that again. That being said, does anybody have anything they would like to bring up?
I'll just introduce myself, see, I. My name's Lisa Addington, I've been in town for a while, about a dozen years, but I just bought a house over on Cloga, and I just thought I'd stop in.
Welcome, thank you.
I remember the lady who was always named after, oh, yeah, an amazing woman that was always giving service to our community, and, yeah, the family, so.
Yes, I've had a lot of introductions from my new neighbors and, you know, in teacher village.
And I know a lot of your neighbors, so. Anybody else this evening?
I have one question, but I think I interrupted Dan, and I asked him, but maybe he could just share it with us. Is there gonna be a, a summer, you said, summer senior graduation, have any of these things set up? Oh, sorry, I was just. Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Usually I go to Dan for all of my questions.
Okay, you two talk to each other.
We have, right, so we, and I wanna publicly, I share my appreciation with Dan, he's so gracious, and so helpful, Dan, I really appreciate it. We have four students through summer school who have completed their coursework in our August graduate. However, as of right now, there's only one student that I am trying to get ahold of who we think wants to participate in the ceremony. And that, and so I'm in the process of trying to reach that student and their family to set that up for hopefully one day next week.
We had floated the idea of doing it during this board meeting, but it just didn't, didn't seem like anybody was interested in any of them in participating, but in, in future years, I'm hoping that becomes a tradition, because I think that's kind of nice.
Yeah, we, we did, there were a couple of years that we had several students who were interested in doing that, and then COVID.
We did it last year, we did it last year.
Yeah.
Only myself could make it, but we were.
But, um, we're always willing, if we can make it, we're happy to come and participate in any way that we can, because it's important to let those students know that we recognize that they made that effort, and, you know, okay, they didn't get to walk in June, but by golly, they finished now.
Thank you, Marley.
Absolutely, keep you updated, but I, I think it's a great idea moving forward if we are able to incorporate it.
Yeah.
Are we on board comments now?
Yes, okay.
Well, good news, you guys pretty much covered everything I had. The only thing I wanted to ask about was during our workshop that was held that night, too, by the way, excellent, I did request 11 copies to be mailed to Stacy, so Mark should be getting those out, those nice little legal binders that everyone wants a copy of, so, and, and then a couple other things you wanted. So he said he would get those out and send them to Stacy. In that workshop, there was discussion about possibly us meeting collectively to just talk about the format of the agenda and how it looks. I wondered if we could still have that, so it's not more related discussion, but it's still, like, I don't know what it's called.
Yeah, we, we can have a work session, so that we're not doing it during a public meeting.
Right.
And that's not with the intent to not have the discussion in front of the public, but more in terms of not taking up time. But yes, that is still something we, we have to figure out when we can do that.
So, with you guys, can I summarize, so, what I think a good agenda would be for the work session and send it all over you?
Sure.
Okay.
It just, it would be, as long as you know that that may not be.
No, 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 I know, it's just, it's just based on the workshop that we attended. All the recommendations that Mark presented, basically. And I'm just gonna put them in a bullet format, so.
Can you include Stacy on that?
Absolutely, I, I usually copy all of you, right?
Yeah.
So there was that, and by the way, excellent workshop, thank you so much for coordinating that. And then one other final comment, is there any way we can communicate to the community, parents, pretty much everybody, in some format, what the purpose of the board is, in a nice way? Okay, Chris, what's your thoughts?
Because there was a leadership meeting, this, this was a leadership conference this weekend, I think I knew that, Friday and Saturday. And one of the things that I was gonna be back to the board that I thought was an amazing idea is to build a small pamphlet, and you have it at the front of the thing, and it really just, and they have a couple templates, and this has a couple templates, that really just allows people walking in to understand, sort of like, the board policy, what we do, how we do it, you know, that, you know, things like that. I, I took that back as a really positive note, like, something that we could do that'd be very simple, and I thought it'd be really great for our history students too, that come in to do it, that they can use it as a resource when they do their visit to the board, so, you know, I am willing to reach out to the people that did the presentation and ask if we can get sort of a template to look at, and then we can add it to that meeting, but I thought that would be a nice little communication, and then it could be made as a flyer, we put on the website too, I just thought it might be nice.
I love it.
We, and with, and being new, and also with COVID, for open houses, we were trying to do things like that, so that at each open house, some of the board members can be there to answer questions, or even say who you are, and just hands out, like, this is what we do, or even like, hey, if you ever wanna do this, it's, it's great, and we, we can, just think about it, because most people that are asked say, well, not right now, but if you can drop that in advance and let them start thinking about it, especially when they have students at the CEA, I mean, that's my own personal view. I think that people should think about it and not necessarily be, but we, we had done. People should think about it and not necessarily be, but we, we had done that in the past.
Yes.
We had tables set up.
It was a single sheet of paper. Yeah, it was, it was a tri-fold and we had, um, like a poster, kind of like a.
We'll add candy to it or something if that's acceptable in policies to give out. People didn't really want it.
Yes, and, and Pat would occasionally do up a little, like, raffle basket. Yeah, swag. Whitney Point swag is what she calls it.
There was a couple of other really, really good ideas, um, but I don't, the meeting here at my office, so.
Yeah.
It was a very, very, oh, I mean, for a hundred dollars to go to that was really, I mean, all held on the eight, nine, but it didn't really matter because the, just the bonding and everything that happened and the dancing was really great.
Yeah, I was.
Should we incorporate that?
But then about 20 of us women started dancing. So we had a great time. So we went to bed at midnight. I mean, at 10:00 and the hour, but we still get that.
Um, is there anything else that was a really good takeaway?
There was. It's in my notes.
Okay.
Oh, so, okay. Yeah, excellent. So, and then the one thing that, and I'll share that with you. I pulled Stacy over to send some stuff. There was a really cool website. And maybe during, you've seen it, Edunomics, Edunomics, I think it's called, maybe. Um, but it's really interesting. It's a research by Harvard and they actually have a, they have a time, they have a map of every school district in the United States of America and how much learning was lost during online learning. And it, it's quite fascinating what they've done with it. And, but most importantly, was the fact that this one woman spoke and said, as everybody, raise your hand, tell me how much trigonometry you remember. If you remember, 75% of your trigonometry from a trigonometry class. Of course, nobody raised their hand. People asked, well, how about 1%? There was a few hands up. There was. And then she said, so why in the world are we trying to make sure our students gain back trigonometry information when we should be teaching them problem solving and critical skills?
Amen.
I thought that was really.
Yep.
You shouldn't say that as a board.
I was just gonna say, can I say?
If somebody that likes trigonometry.
Yeah, I, and that's what I said. It wasn't 1% there, but, but I, I thought, you know, it was really great. And, um, if, uh, you're done, Tiana.
I'm done. I thank you.
Um, I, I don't know what we're gonna make a decision, um, as a board going to the conference, but just a reminder that the NISBA conference is right this year.
Oh, yeah.
That's in when is that? Or October?
It's the last weekend in October.
Thank you.
And with the NISBA account, I think it's $500 per person.
I'll add that to the agenda.
Still pretty pricey.
Just so we have like a list of things.
Yeah.
Or not really the agenda, just topics of.
Yeah, just, yeah, topics for us to look at. Okay, um, and, and here's a question. You know, we've all talked about during work sessions. Because we do need to have time to discuss things that don't necessarily have to do with board business, but like, I would want to structure our meetings going forward. Do we want to have two, um, two free comments from the public? Or do we want to have one that is open for any topic and one that is open for agenda items? And we need to have time to discuss that. And again, it's not that we don't want to discuss it in, in front of people. We do. But we also don't want to, like, I'm, I'm sure Dan is about ready to fall asleep over there, because I'm sure he's been working 80 hours a week lately.
By the way, thank you for all your work.
Yeah. So, you know, it, it's time for us to have discussions like that to, um, work through those things. What do you guys feel would work for a work session as in like time, day? Um. Right. And I know that Tom, sometimes it's difficult for you to.
Get out of a pond, get cleaned up enough to get here, get all the mud and stink off. Yeah, it is a little.
Yeah, so I, I don't want to say, and, and personally, on Tuesdays, it's like I already have to get off at five instead of eight. So I'd rather not have to get off at four. Um.
I would just say something. I know in the past, sometimes we, I don't know for everyone, but I know I'd have to take vacation time. I'd rather not have to use vacation time to do something that I'm kind of volunteering for. So.
Yeah, that's exactly how I feel.
Past was trying to, and I know we got away from that, but I'll just say that part is.
Some evenings work okay for you, Tom? An evening would be.
I am, I am because of civil service law. I am partially retired right now. So I have some free days.
Here's a question.
Um, evening would work better for me or even weekends?
If we have a meeting where our agenda is not, like this one was, this one was, wasn't overflowing.
Yeah, after, after it might make the work.
You know, it, would you guys be willing to schedule a work session after a meeting, like if it's not?
If it's a little bit shorter.
I, I'd much rather do an evening than a weekend.
I have. Yeah, and, and I'd rather do it when we're already here than have to try to figure out another day.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could get some information on that one too, because I will say that, um, the majority of the people said that if you're going to have two comment periods, one should be agenda only and one should be open comment. So it was quite interesting. Yeah.
Yeah, and, but we just, we need to have a chance to look. Yeah, talk it out, look at options and just, you know, and it also means looking at our policy for that. Um, and working on, um, adjusting the policy to go along with that. Uh, but I just wanted an idea of how everybody wanted to do that. Like, you know, it's, if we already know we have to be here for board meeting and the agenda is packed. I also don't want to keep people here until 10, 11 o'clock, because we've done that too. That's not fun.
I think we could arrange it that way. If something happens in the board meeting gets long, we take it off to another day. That's all. It's simple. We can work it out.
And, um, what I am going to say is that we have not completed Joanne's evaluation as of yet. The board needs to go over it. Um, before I present it to her. And we were going to try to do it for work session, but, um, we wanted you to be there for us. And so I was hoping that we would do it tonight. I, I know. But again, everybody's input is valuable. And, but again, we're missing two people tonight. So, um, I don't know how packed our agenda will be for the 13th, but I'm gonna put a hard.
I won't be here over. I'm sorry.
Chris? You're telling me.
I have, I, I mean, I lived two years without missing a day. Even the day my father died, I arrived here.
Um. You do know I'm teasing, right?
Yeah, I have to be a record like that. Very sad, sad.
Very sad.
My students have.
Um. Okay, so this is what I'm going to do. Those of you who need to be in on reviewing, or I have copies of it. I will give it to you tonight. Um, even if we have to find a time to.
I might probably call in on an evening like that. I could probably take a half hour off and see how many student activities and join you guys if I need to.
On the 13th, you think? Okay.
You don't have to get off the train for a little.
But I, I wanna, I wanna put that on the 13th, we will go over her evaluation because we need to be able to.
Let me know what time and I'll make sure I make it.
So I had put something together. I, I didn't know whether, I'm just gonna email to you all. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. You had asked me to do that.
Yes, um, she did go. Self-evaluation?
Yeah.
Excellent. Good chat, Joanne.
Not, you know, she, she did look at the evaluation that we used, which.
We're gonna redo.
Yeah.
I have that on the, uh, topics to review.
We have to. And now that Joanne has seen it, she's like.
Yeah. NISBA had several templates for that.
Yes. Oh, yeah.
We're using their comment period draft. That came straight from them, right?
Yeah, um, mostly. We, we tweaked it a little bit to, to.
Just a couple of words. I mean, but it is almost word for.
Oh, yeah. No, no, we, yeah, but, um, that was one of the handouts that he gave me a copy of that Tiana has now.
Yeah, I requested that.
That Tiana has requested copies of that.
I have a copy of that. I got it this last weekend.
Yeah, so, um, but that is, that is, our goal is by April to have a new evaluation set in place.
We had said this, what, three years ago. We wanted to redo it, right? We're making it happen this time. I know. This was a while ago.
Well, but if you just go online and look at templates, it's impossible. But with NISBA having templates and examples for us to use, since we now pay our dues.
That's right. We're gonna use everything they can give us. We're not gonna let one penny go to waste.
Hard stuff. We will be going over that on the 13th, whether everybody's here or not.
Okay.
Okay.
And I'll follow up with Mark to see where we're at. I tried calling today. It was weird. I got, had a voicemail that no one was available. It was, they were. Okay, that makes sense. So, all right. That's all I've got. This was the best board meeting ever.
I, I, I just had one more comment.
Absolutely.
Um, I did, I did dress down today. Um, we have volunteered, it's the safety pad, if anybody's aware. Uh, Room County, uh, Speedy Fest and Balloon Rally. Uh, they have had a safety, um, activity in place. We volunteered for many, many, many years there. The people that came up to that were, um, Jay Whitelaw, who was a, uh, past principal from what is now the TR, uh, TRA building, and Sharon Schuber. And, um, on the back, let's see if I can do this. It says in loving memory of Sharon Schuber, who was a teacher here at the TROA that passed away in January 2021. And they honored her this year on the shirts. And I just wanted, I saw and I was like, I think I should bring this up.
Um.
Yes.
And I don't want to lighten this, but, um, I've been working with teachers for over 36 years. I've literally worked with hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of different teachers. And I worked with Sharon Schuber before we moved to this area. I have to say, I think she is the most amazing teacher I've ever worked with out of, everyone I've ever worked with. She called, and this is when I, again, before I worked here, she set up a science day for her students. So she was STEM before STEM. And she had all the local experts come in and do this. She was an amazing woman. Um, she did, um, that was before. And then when we moved here, um, I was fortunate enough that I know anybody that had students that were her students or in her Odyssey of the Mind or anything that dealt with her. Everything. I, yeah, we, we did, uh, she had me come out and I took, uh, students from here to the bog at Landers Corners. And we were treating through the bog with students. I mean, she was just one of the most amazing people I've ever met. And I just wanted to mention for those people that didn't get a chance to meet her, um, she was from here. She is one of the most amazing teachers, was one of the most amazing teachers and equal as a human being. So if anybody had the, um, honor and privilege to be around her, she was honored. She did, it was almost a year and a half ago, but, um, she's Whitney Point zone. And, and for what it's worth, like I said, I do science stuff and I love science. She, there's nobody close to what she was. So she's here and here. And I just wanted to mention it.
Thanks for sharing that. Um, that's wonderful. I didn't have.
I was really happy to see that.
Very nice.
Jay Whitelaw pulled it out and she did a little talk and then they showed it on the back. So, and there were some other retired teachers that had been with, uh, Sharon. They also helped there. And it was, it was a rough, uh, uh, training for the people for this year down there. But I just wanted to do that. Thank you for the time. And again, the people that work here and the, the people in this community are just amazing.
Even today, just sort of, that's awesome. I had a training I did today. It was like, oh, Whitney Point Home Town. Tim Heller was there. He's from here at Kelly. Um, her last name, we're now, but she was married for your daughter. And, um, so we're all sitting there. We're like, oh, my goodness. This is like little Whitney Point happy place. Very nice.
Thank you. It was just.
That's awesome. That's a nice story. Love that.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
I don't believe that we have you for an executive session tonight. Um, so we are going to adjourn the meeting at 7:52?
Yeah. Well.
Um, they have a motion? Um, Chris and, is that Brian? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Thank you very much for everybody.
Thank you guys for joining us long.
Thank you.
Awesome for us. Thank you.